Good evening, everyone. Today, January ninth, 2024, at 6:00 P. M., I call for order. Please join me for the place of leisure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, Robo Cole, please.
Supervisor Aliaga.
Here.
Clerk Newbeck here, Treasurer Brown.
Here.
Trustee Morocco.
Here.
Trustee Nalimofin.
Here.
Trustee Ritchie.
Here.
And Trustee Tetter.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the agendas presented.
No, amend the consent.
Amend the consent, right? We're going to amend the consent, okay. We're going to have an amendment on consent agenda.
But we can approve the regular agenda before that.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the agendas presented.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, Carrie. Okay. All right. Board and public announcements, board members or individuals, make statements containing information about recent and coming event. Carrie?
Absent voter ballots will be available for voters beginning next Thursday, January 18th, and applications to those that are on our permanent absent voter list have already been mailed out. I do want to point out to the voters, you do have to choose a ballot selection. This comes about every four years for presidential primaries, so you'd have to choose whether you want a Democratic ballot, a Republican ballot, or if you are in precinct one in Lake Orion School District only, you would have the option of choosing a ballot if you'd like without party selection. There is a Lake Orion School millage proposal on that. So this is not only just for your application, but when you do show up at the polls, if you choose to vote at the polls on Election Day, you will have to make a selection to choose either a Republican or Democratic ballot to make sure you're given the correct ballot. I think voters sometimes tend to forget, but we do do this every four years. So I just wanted to give everyone a heads up on that, and thank you for voting ahead of time. And that's all I have.
All right. I also would like to congratulate U of M. I see a lot of people wearing the U of M with a full thing that was really nice. I watched again last night. I enjoyed the lights, so go blue. Anyone else?
I just want to say Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you. All right. Anyone else? All right. Morning, Ellen. All right. Public comments. Anyone that would like to, any public comments? Okay. Yes, Andy.
Hi, good evening. My name is Andy Meisner. Was a former Oakland County Treasurer, and I wanted to come and reintroduce myself in my new role as the CEO of Michigan's newest bank. It's called Community Unity Bank, or the Cub, and the idea is that no matter what letter we have after our name, that, you know, we all want to take the next step on the kind of economic ladder and to be financially empowered, you know, to use money in our life as a tool. And, you know, having a locally owned bank with local decision making, make sure that we get access to capital for small businesses. And that's our focus as a bank, is on small business lending. And, you know, we think small business is the backbone of the economy and that, you know, capital is the lifeblood of small business. And sometimes when there's a downturn in the economy, sometimes the larger banks stop lending. We saw that during the recession. But local community banks, you know, certainly Clarkson State Bank was a great one that merged with Waterford, but they kept lending. And when businesses went to get PPP, you know, a lot of times you go to some of the bigger ones and they forget who you are. But when you, you know, go to your local community bank or credit union, you know, for that matter, they keep the money flowing. I do want to acknowledge the pleasure it was to work with Treasurer Brown during my time as Treasurer and really enjoyed our collaboration as part of what made the job fun. But it's a Community Unity Bank. You can set up a Cub account. Come and get one of these guys. We also have, this is a money plant. So, you know, we're really big on multi-generational wealth building. You know, we think if you want to really make a change, you have to focus on a multi-generational strategy so kids can get a Cub account, plant these seeds, and then watch the money plant grow, which is kind of fun. And we have gummy bears, but these are the boring kind, so nothing too spicy there. It's a communityunity.bank is our website. That is communityunity.bank. The dot bank is a suffix that only FDIC-approved institutions can use. Now, I wanted to leave you real quickly with five tips for smart banking, fraud prevention, and financial wellness in 2024. I want to be respectful of my time limit. Am I? Am I okay? Okay. So number five. Always place your deposits with an FDIC-insured institution or a credit union insured by the NCUA. There's online depositories that might be offering a high rate, but they might not be FDIC-insured, and so you just want to make sure you know who you're dealing with. Number four. According to the FBI, there is a check fraud ring going on in Oakland County right now, where folks are stealing checks from the mailbox, from other sources, and then they doctor these checks, and then they try to deposit them as their own or get them cashed. According to the FBI, they say that if you insist on writing a paper check, do so with a gel pen instead of a ballpoint pen, which seems like a simple thing, but they say that the gel is harder for the bad guys to erase, which they kind of do through chemicals. Three, for any small business owners out there, there's something called Positive Pay, which is a fraud prevention tool. It basically, you give the bank a list of who an approved person is to send or receive money, and then if it isn't that person, the bank doesn't do the transaction. So it's like an additional fraud prevention tool. Number two, always use multi-part authentication. You know, it's kind of a pain. You know, you got to do like the sign-in plus like the text or the email, but it's worth it. And always use a password that includes numbers, letters, upper and lowercase, and a symbol, because that's harder for the bad guys to get to you. And the number one top smart banking fraud prevention and financial wellness tip for 2024, be careful what you click on. A leading cause of fraud, cyber attack, and ransomware is someone clicking on a link that they shouldn't. It could come through your phone as a text or an email. Look out for minor differences, like one letter being different or maybe like an extra bit of punctuation. That's a sign of inauthenticity. So really appreciate the service of the supervisor and the board. Independence Township's a great place. It was such an honor to represent it and, you know, excited to now partner with the community in a new way and hopefully continue to be a resource in any way that we can. And because I'm a cheesy recovering politician, my cellphone is still 421 Andy if anybody wants a check. Thank you, and Happy New Year as well.
Thank you, Andy. Can we free samples?
No, free samples. Anyone else? Anyone online there? All right. We don't have a public hearing today. No presentations and reports. The consent agenda, we're going to amend all the check runs, Carrie?
Yeah, one, we had to pull a check out of the ACH check run. There was an error found, and that check was deleted and reissued, so the amount has been amended. I can let you read through if you want, and then I'll make the motion to indicate the correct amount.
Sure. You want me to read?
Well, just read your regular, and then I'll make the motion to amend from the incorrect to the correct amount.
All right, sounds good. Yes, perfect, okay. Hold on. Okay. The consent agenda, number one, request to approve the Board of Trustees' regular meetings, minutes of December ninth, 2023. Two, request to approve the January two, 2024 check run, including the ACH, and ratified at December 22, 2023 payroll, that's one, 300.
That was the one before that.
Okay, okay. And third, request to approve out-of-state travel for Great Lakes Parks Institute in Angola, Indian.
Indiana.
Indiana, oh, okay. Thank you, Ron. It should be Indiana, I was thinking Indiana, like, wow, a long trip. Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion to amend the consent agenda, item J.2, January 2nd, 2024 check run amount from $1,123,546.70 to $1,121,407,069.
Okay.
Can I make a clarification that the meeting minutes were December 19th, not December 9th?
Oh, did he say the 9th, not the 1st?
No, no, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
As amended. Support.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll make a motion now to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now to regular business. This one, number one, is request to the appointment of the Board of Community Members for Parks and Recreation and Senior Advisory. Adam, can you please come to the podium? Adam Claymore, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Recreation and Seniors.
That's right.
As you guys may know, we had a Parks Recreation and Seniors Advisory Committee that has not operated since, I believe, 2021. So it's been, all of the past members, their terms have expired. So I look to resurrect the committee, went back to the applications that had been filled out. I've talked to at least 11. I have, there's actually two more members that wish to become members. I didn't get their information in time. But I think they will be well-rounded. They want to help. They want to be part of this committee. So I wanted to recommend them. Their names are listed in the MAITH, and you should have their applications also. And some of them are here tonight. I see some of them here. We're going to hopefully have a meeting on, if all goes well. We'll have a meeting on Thursday. We haven't had a spot yet because I wasn't sure about the planning commission is also on Thursday, 2nd Thursday. So we might move it, but I understand that it's canceled, so we might bring it back here. But I'll make sure we get it posted.
Sure. Treasurer Brown?
I have a suggestion, and I think it's great folks want to join this committee. You have, we have them all expiring at the same time.
Okay.
And typically, we try to do it so that there's a group that's a shorter term, and then they would just get reappointed, say, in two years. So if we could split, I think you'd have the benefit of not potentially having everybody up for reappointment at the same time, so you have some continuity if some people decide not to participate again. You have some new people coming on, and really, I think the benchmark for this would be to try and have a third, like a third of the members being reappointed every year, so that you have that kind of consistency going forward. If you work into that as we go forward, I think you'd benefit.
Certainly. The way the bylaws are written now, it just says members' terms will be three years, unless extended by vote of the majority of the committee membership and approved by Township Board. However, we certainly can change those bylaws to, following these bylaws, change the bylaws to do exactly what you're saying.
Yeah. Clerk Newbeck?
I think the bylaws might be all right. It's just, I think it's unfortunate that we've had everyone drop off, so you're, you know, you've got a complete clean slate.
Right.
When you have two or three that expired and then we reappoint, that's what keeps the ball rolling.
Right.
I think it just may be beneficial if you would like to choose or, you know, if we go ahead and we approve the group as a whole, if you want to come back, and the Board can make individual motions to set expiration dates.
Because I have to, with the officers, and we haven't elected those either, and those are two-year terms. So yes, I believe as a group, we'll sit down and do that and separate those out because it seems to be the smartest thing to do. And then I also will bring the two other members, as long as they're accepted by the group, and I'm sure they will, bring those two back also. So that will be a max of 14, and then Mr. Tetter and Jose and myself.
Right. Keep in mind that this Board has been for three-year term for many years. This issue didn't start with my administration. It came way before, for several years, and nobody suggests this change until right now. And the reason we do, the reason we're doing this is because Adam is working really hard and finding a way. We still have posted that a lot of, the members currently in this Board, their terms expire. We need to do something about it. Says, Adam, let's do something. And he, we got a lot of applications, a lot of individuals, residents that want to be part of it, and this is something that's going to be beneficial for our community, you know, for our parks. As we know, we done as a Board, a lot of good improvements for the park. Treasurer Brown?
I apologize if there was any suggestion that anyone's done anything wrong. It's not the case. Every committee that's been formed with this township over the years initially started with terms spread out amongst the folks who got appointed. So the first time I had an investment advisory committee set up, one group's terms expired in one year, and other groups expired in two years, and the next group expired in three years. This is consistent on every committee we've ever had. This is just an unusual situation, certainly not the fault of the supervisors, that the committee stopped happening, and which means everybody fell off by the time we got to today. So this is really just something to help straighten up for him.
Right.
And I just want to make clear.
Right, no, we're clear, no. Thanks for bringing that to our attention, but, you know, Adam is taking action since a lot of, if you look at the website currently, everybody is expired right now. We don't have a Board, and except for Trustee Tetter and myself and Adam. We need a Board, and it's very nice, and a lot of people have been applying for this position to fill for this committee, and now we're going to have an active Board, and I think it's a good thing. All right. Everyone else? Oh, Trustee.
Yeah, I just want to say I'm excited to see this resurrected because when I was appointed, I was maybe under the assumption that this was a well-run machine, but we'll get it going again, and we'll certainly walk before we run. But since this is Parks Recreation and Seniors, is Jennifer Angus or Designee involved in this committee as well?
So they have a separate committee of senior community center advisory group that will be meeting tomorrow at 9:00 A. M. Some of those members are also on this one. I encourage them that they should come over here also to be a voice for seniors. Jennifer certainly knows about it. Matter of fact, when I talked to her about it, she said she used to be a member of this committee before she ever worked for the township. And so, yet she's aware of it. Certainly, she's not, according to the bylaws, unless we want to change them as a group, part of this committee. However, like I said, there are several crossover members that can represent senior interests in this committee.
Yeah, and I don't know that it needs to be fixed tonight unless it's something we can do easily, but so long as the word senior is, remains part of this group, I think there should be a representative of a senior contingent. But I'd also make the argument that I think these could be two standalone committees because they're equal, of equal importance, and the issues don't always align.
Right.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Belinda Billings, Patricia Drizlinski, Ross Gallantine, Diane Cosetta, Jessica Krug, Joette Kuntz, Mary Beth Rogers, William Scarborough, Donald Tillman, Heidi Warrington, and Annette Zeman Parker for Parks Recreation and Seniors Advisory Committee for three-year terms, scheduled to expire on December 31st, 2026.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. The second item is about the request to approve the Residential Open Space Advisory Committee. So we talked about this last meeting. It was some requests about approval of the bylaws and that Mr. Consultant Richard Carlisle helped us with that. Rick, you would like to maybe bring some comments about the bylaws?
Well, the bylaws you have before you are constructed, I think, a little bit more in line with what our bylaws normally have been done. I worked with Joe Sujia to get this document back before the Open Space Committee. Mr. Brown brings up an excellent point in the fact that it, you know, we typically have staggered terms for appointments, one, two, and three years. There were, what I attempted to do is go back through the Board motions establishing the committee, and there was a second action that you took in terms of the number of people, establishing the group and the number of people. The one thing that you'll notice in this document is that Parks and Recreation Director was listed as a member, but it's been very, it was irregular for us to have a voting staff member on a committee. So it's ex officio non-voting member on this committee. That's in this document. The other thing that occurred was the bylaws that we received from, the original bylaws indicated there would be a Township Board representative, but didn't indicate that there was a Planning Commission representative on the Open Space Committee. And the Board's, the Board's motion establishing the Open Space Committee was specific that both a Board and Planning Commission member shall be members of the committee. So I think the structure of this is in line with how bylaws are normally written. It's very similar to the Planning Commission bylaws. And I'll be happy to answer any questions from Board members in that regard.
Sure. Any Board members would like to have a comment or question? Sure. Treasurer Brown?
I was excited when this committee got set up, and I would like to participate with the committee, and I'm wondering if it wouldn't make sense to have two Board members participate. We have that on several other committees, including the Parks Recreation and Seniors, the Investment Advisory Committee, License Committee. And so I would imagine that's a fairly easy adjustment here on the fly to indicate there would be two Board members appointed, and I would request that I be one of them, join Trustee Morocco on that committee, if that's the Board's pleasure.
And, okay, this amendment have to be now done by the committee or?
Let me say this. This, unlike, for example, a Planning Commission or a zoning Board of Appeals, where you have statutory language that you have to follow in terms of Board appointments and representation, this is, this committee is a creation of the Board. So you can, you can have the makeup of the committee any way you want it. I mean, you as, you know, whatever the Board as a majority decides you want. So if you, if you want one Board member or seven Board members to be on the committee, that's, that's, that's up to you.
So we'll slow everything down because we don't, I don't want to see us have to send this back and then change anything. I just want, because I want to be right in with what's happening now, so.
The, the original makeup was based, the makeup is based on a resolution or a motion by the Township Board. The composition of that is a decision of the Town, the composition of that is a decision of the Township Board, is what I'm trying to say. You can make that decision, and then the bylaws will have to be amended. You're not going to slow anything down because the bylaws would have to be amended, I would assume, out of courtesy to go back to the Open Space Committee, but it's, finally, the makeup is a decision of the Board.
Anyone?
I got a couple of questions.
Sure.
Would by, so would this be forcing another, like it would mandate to do that? So that, you know, in future Boards, like Paul's interested in getting involved, but now, is that going to be something, it's going to be a bylaws that we're going to make two Board members commit to this? It's not like we don't have enough Boards to sit on. And now you're going to have two Boards committed to the, two Board members committed to this, and whether they're full-time or trustees, I don't know if that matters. And I don't care, I don't want to lose another resident on the Board to do this. So do we increase the number of participants because Paul wants to be on it?
Well, a 12-person Board is a pretty large Board.
Well, it is, but with the subcommittees and the groups of people in the subcommittees, having that larger number is important because there's so many different topics and things that the Board has tasked itself to look at as ways of prevention, preservation, acquiring land, looking at ordinances, you know, all of those different things. So we do have subcommittees set up, so we wouldn't want to go down from, you know, at least 12 is good because it gives us three groups of four not to be a quorum and to be able to work together in subcommittees to get more done faster because we only meet so often, so.
Sounds like a baker's dozen.
I mean, it's a decision of the Township Board in terms of how many members you want. I mean, it's not for me to say, I'm not here to give advice about the number. If you want to have 57 people on this Board, it's up, if that's what the Township Board would like, that's what you, that's what you'll have.
I guess the other question would be is what, to, now, we had some issues with the bylaws that didn't get reviewed. You didn't have a chance to look at them, but, you know, and we got them to you now, and that was what was holding up our appointments to fill the vacant seats, which is two critical people are, that were on the Board, you know, that are now not appointed, reappointed, or three. that are now not appointed, reappointed, or three because our bylaws aren't done. So now is this going to slow us down on getting our appointments, which should have been on the agenda tonight, which I don't see are on there? So we're... we've got this appointments lingering out now because of the bylaws. You didn't have a chance to see the bylaws, you know?
No, I don't think it should. I think, I mean...
And does it have to be an official position to add two board members? Or can it just... because it's an open meeting, can a board member just participate without us having to change all the bylaws to allow Paul to come to our meetings and participate?
I'll try to answer... Sam asks a lot of questions without giving a chance to answer.
That will be a question.
You can make it as... you... I mean, you can make the committee as many members as you wish. You are the board. This is a creation of the board. If you want to have it read something to the effect of up to two board members, that's fine, too. If you want to make it that it can be as many as 13 members, that's fine. The problem is, is you may not always find 13 people that want to be on this committee five, six, seven, eight years down the road here. So I think you can... I think it can be worded in a manner to give the township board the flexibility to fill this committee based on the interest. But if indeed one of the items certainly can be up to two board members, which would give this board the ability to appoint a second board member to be on that committee if that's what they choose to do. So yes, it could be done. And it's not going to slow anything down in terms of the appointments because this is only the addition of a potential one more board member. I think if you condition... based on your decision, if you condition your approval on this change being made, then it goes back to the Open Space Committee. But ultimately, the approval of the bylaws is a township board decision. I would defer to Township Attorney that's here tonight about what the proper procedure is. But, I mean, the bylaws are something ultimately that are always approved by the township board.
Would you like to...
Sure.
Our Township Attorney.
Oh, you're... So, Mr. ... Good evening, first of all. Mr. Carlisle is correct that it's up to the township board. If you want to send it back down to the subcommittee for their consideration as to whether they would like to add another board member, that's the board's prerogative. If you want to approve the bylaws tonight with subject to that amendment, the board may do so.
Okay. Trustee Alamato, I believe you...
Yeah, I was just going to make a suggestion, and Mr. Carlisle brought it up on the point that where it says one member shall be a member and serve as a liaison to the township board. I was just going to say, if you make it at least one member, then you're allowed to go over. If you just put the word "at least" in there, you have to have at least one, but you can have more. That's just a simple wording. Would that have to go back just for that small amendment? Or we can approve it with that little amendment today?
In my opinion, you can approve it with that amendment tonight. If the board's... if it's the board's pleasure to get the subcommittee's opinion on that to ensure that they agree with that determination, the board may do so. But if you want to approve those bylaws tonight with that change, you may. Yes, you have the authority to do so.
Okay. Clark Newbeck.
The only comment I would have, if we were to do that, to have more than one, we'd have to, of course, say not more than three because it would be quorum of the board. And two, it talks about one member must be of the planning commission and serve as a liaison. I think we would need something in there... it would behoove us, I think, to not be the board member that is the liaison to the planning commission. Because I would think that they want... the idea with that is to actually get a planning commission member, not a board member liaison.
Right.
And nothing against Ron, but...
Nothing against you, Ron.
You know, I just think maybe some...
Let me make... how about simply making the... I mean, look, if it is the board's pleasure to allow it up to two members, I think the better way to word this might be at least one, but not more than two board members shall be appointed and served... and serve as liaison. That way, you're going to have a limitation of two. I don't think it's... getting three people to serve on this committee and actually serving a sufficient amount of time is a little unrealistic, I think, given all your responsibilities in the other committees you serve on. So that particular language would meet your objective. And there may be times where you only have one member that's able to serve on this for... because of time commitments. But for now, you have the ability to... if you were to make this change, you would have at least two members. Does that make sense? Okay.
Ready to make a motion or...
We'll move to approve the Residential Open Space Advisory Committee bylaws as amended.
So it is going to read at least one, but not more than two?
Oh.
What is amended?
Yeah, I thought she was as presented, I'm sorry.
Well, I said it has amended.
Okay, well, what you got to say with that is...
I need to know... I don't want to mistake this, so I want to clarify if your intention is...
With at least one member, but not more than two of the township board.
Okay. That's what the motion is, so...
Is the motion that you second, Sam?
No.
No, what... so you don't second the motion?
I'll second.
You second the motion. So the motion is at least one member, but no more than two?
Of the township board, yeah.
All right, sure, trustee Morocco.
Who's... so who... how does the board delegate the, you know, the liaison? Or there is no liaison at the board level, only the planning commission level? Which is how we set it up originally. Well, you don't have a second?
It reads here...
Jim has a second, but...
It reads here a member of and serve as liaison to the township board.
A member of what, a board member or a planning commission?
One member shall be a member. And then one member shall be a member of the planning commission, liaison of the planning commission, so.
I would have to increase... with this proviso, I would have to increase the membership to 13. So it has to say, "The committee shall consist of up to 13 members," which means it can be less. At least one member, at least one, but not more than two members shall be a member of and serve as liaison to the township board. One member shall be a member of the planning commission and serve as liaison to the planning commission. I don't realistically think that if you have two board members sitting on the committee that you can only say one can be the liaison. That's... you're all equally... you all have equal votes at this table. So even if you disagree about something, that's okay as a township board member to be a quote "liaison," even though you might not be on the same page on any individual issue that the Open Space Committee comes back. I'm going to assume that you will fairly report what the results are from the Open Space Committee. Plus, you have entire Open Space Committee, including a chair, who's able to come and speak to the board as it is anyway, so.
So do we really need to do all this? What's the benefit?
What do you mean?
Of adding the more people? Why don't we just leave it the way it is?
Well, that's up to the board, as I said. This is a board decision.
Order, please. Order, all right.
The rules of order. There's a motion and a second on the table.
I know, I know. They get stuck.
This is a board decision.
Okay.
Yeah, completely a board decision. When you ask that question, you have a motion on the table to do it. Now it's the board decision as to whether you want to do it or not.
Okay, and the amendment is just to add two board members?
The amendment really is going to technically read, "Consist of up to 13 members, at least one, but not more than two members shall be a member of and serve as a liaison to the township board."
Are you consistent with that amendment?
Yes, and I approve that, and I believe trustee Tetter seconded. So now we vote.
We're not taking any public comment on this.
Is there discussion following a second?
We can have public comment. We can have public...
Before or after the vote?
You have to do it after...
You have a motion on the table. You already have a motion on the table.
We have to vote. That's how the order goes. We already have a second, we have to vote.
The only comment... the only comment that you can have, it comes from the board. Am I correct about this?
It's accurate under your board bylaws.
Correct. This is not... this is... now, you can pull that to get public comment, but you have a motion on the table. The only discussion at this point should come from within the township board.
Sure. I would like to pull it up just because I think we need the public comment. I think a lot of people, residents are here and would like to speak.
Brittany, we have to...
You need a motion and a second to pull the motion off the board and a majority vote of the board.
To get the public comment. I never... I disagree with public comment, but... You don't have a motion against for public comment?
Well, I'll make a motion.
For public comment?
Sure, we take this off the table and see if anyone is interested in commenting on it.
Okay, I will second your motion for public comment. Okay? If we roll a call, we...
No, that's majority.
Majority of votes? Okay. For open... to the floor to public comment, to allow the public to speak. All those... hold on, we need a motion, we need a motion.
The motion is actually to take... to pull the motion off the agenda.
Off the agenda.
Off... or take... pull the motion off the table.
So we can allow the public...
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, all right, that's the motion. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now the public can speak. Who would like to talk about this topic?
Hi, everybody, good evening.
I'm glad you guys got that worked out. Oh, thank you, thank you. All right, Joe, please state your name and address, please.
Joe Sutcher, 5071 Hilltop Estates. I don't have any comment on the addition or anything like that, that's fine. But you did say something that surprised me tonight, and I... Since we have a meeting tomorrow night, all of our officers' positions expired December 31st. We have also three people on the committee whose terms are expiring or did expire. So I guess my question is, maybe you... the three, if we go ahead tomorrow night with our meeting, which we are, and we go ahead with our scheduled vote for electing officers tomorrow night, do we have to exclude from that process the three people whose terms are expiring that you did not reappoint tonight?
You'd like me to...
Yeah, please.
So the answer is, and I might look to Mr. Carlisle for this, is it depends if the bylaws account for that. Generally, when a term ends, the term ends, and there's not an opportunity for a subcommittee member to continue serving unless the bylaws, the approved bylaws, state otherwise, which I can look at the bylaws quickly right now. Okay, well, he's whispering to me, they don't say that, so.
You know, board members and planning commissioners who've known me for years have known that I try to take a practical approach for all intents and purposes. There's no reason why the Open Space Committee cannot continue to meet. No reason. That it is a... you know, you've appointed them, they... you've made these appointments. These people have been meeting. They're not spending any township money at this point. They're not making any... I mean, they've made some recommendations. They can continue to make recommendations. It's not a decision-making body. It's a recommending body. It's recommending to the planning commission, it's recommending to the township board. So there's no reason why they can't meet pending any resolution of the bylaws. The reason this whole thing came up is because there was miscommunication within the committee that the bylaws needed to be approved by the township board, as do bylaws for all committees. So frankly, that's a little bit of a technicality. So let them meet, resolve this issue, resolve whatever you want to do with your board membership, and we'll get the bylaws, you know, revised in a manner in which the township board is... you know, which is approvable. In other words, you can approve the township... you can approve these bylaws tonight. If you want to make an amendment to it, you can approve that tonight, or you can approve them as-is, or you can not approve them. But the committee's been meeting for six months now practically, right? So I don't see any harm in allowing them to continue to meet.
My only comment would be for the committee is I would think you would want your full committee with your reappointments or your appointments because some of them may want to serve in one of those capacities. So maybe my suggestion would be to postpone, you know, your election of officers because they may want to... you know, there may be some that have not been appointed that might want to serve, that's all.
Tricia Brown.
Two things. Number one, could we simply say, "Committee members' terms have expired. We'll continue until they are reappointed or someone else is appointed should they not desire reappointment." Add that to the motion. That way, that way, the people whose terms have expired, they're valid now until they come back to be reappointed. That's number one. Number two, and I didn't expect to have to somehow try to justify my desire to participate in something I think most people in this room like, which is open space, but it sounds like I need to, and so I'll do my best. Most of you are familiar with the Clarkston Family Farms. And I bring this up because I got a... my mind works in weird ways. I look at things and often find solutions to problems. Before the Clarkston Family Farms was ever created, I had a number of meetings with Chelsea O'Brien. I had met her through my position as a treasurer, and we had coffee, and she was trying to figure out where's a place where she could do this and not spend too much money, and where can we have this thing? I had gone to Independence Elementary, and I saw what she did behind it. That's where it all started. She had gardens behind Independence Elementary with the kids, right by the building. Well, in the 90s, I was... early 90s, well, actually 80s, I was the handyman for the Bayless Horse Farm at Hubbard Road and M15, where Independence Elementary is now. I muck stalls, I cut the fields, fixed the fences, took care of the house. I eventually was forced by the Baylasses to go to college, and I became a CPA. But I... in my head, the light bulb went off. The schools bought that property. The barns and all that area and the house, they're just used for storage, and I knew that. And I told her, "Go call the schools." She had a meeting with the schools, and her and her team have created something that I think is one of the great features of this community, and that's an educational farm that'll help attract families with young kids. And so I was part of that, right? And so the idea that I want to think of these things and help participate, if I'm not participating, things I might think of, just I won't know that it's there. I'm not brilliant, but again, sometimes I come up with solutions. A lot of times, they won't work, but some of them are okay, all right? So I don't think I need to defend that, but again, that's who I am. About six years ago, I started the process of trying to acquire the property on Clarkston Road and turn it into a park for the township, 80 acres. Many of you might have seen some of that. It was in the papers. We worked pretty hard to try and make that happen. We were not successful at that time. Property's not been sold or developed at this point. It's not... it's still something I would love to think that that would be one of the great things for the township. So that's why I want to participate. Okay, for the board, so.
Trustee...
Yeah, and since the motion's off the table and we can open discuss, I'm a little bit troubled in that Treasurer Brown has to justify his desire to serve on this committee. I think so long as we're not violating rules of quorum, that any of us, should we have an interest or a passion, should have the opportunity to serve. And two board members is pretty commonplace on a lot of the committees, including Parks Recreation and Seniors, that all have an opportunity to serve. And, you know, everything that Treasurer Brown says, I, you know, I know to be the truth, and I know his passion for open spaces. I was on the township board along with Supervisor Aliaga, then trustee Aliaga. We unanimously supported making that 80 acres a park for the benefit of the community. And so I think many hands make light work within reason. The more eyes on an opportunity or a problem, the better. So I'm fully in support of adding a second. So I'm, I'm fully in support of adding a second board member to this important committee. And I think it's been a great addition to the township.
Sure. Anyone from the public that would like to speak? Anyone online? I think somebody raised their hand. Please tell us your name and address.
Looks like Ray Lou Allen.
Hello, this is Ray Lou Allen.
Your address, please.
Uh, my address is 9254 Pine Knob Road, Clarkston, Michigan, 48348. And I'll, you know, I mean, I understand that Paul's saying that he wants to be on this board, which is great. But I just find it kind of disturbing in the beginning part where public comment, from the comments from the public was not really welcomed with open arms. That's, that's really just, I, I think, whether it be this committee or what committee it is, I think that welcoming comments from the public is important. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes. Trustee Alamato.
I'd just like to clarify for her. It wasn't that we were against the public comment. It had to do with Robert's Rules of Order and how a meeting is run and the timing that it was presented. It had nothing to do with the comments. Thank you.
Well, we presented the agenda and then Treasurer Brown brought this amendment right now in the last meeting. That's why people was expecting something and now something changed in the last meeting. That's why people wasn't expected. That's why I opened, since I see some people were raising their hand. That's, that's what it was. But also, excuse me, excuse me, Trustee Ritchie, please. Go ahead.
As I say, as a supervisor, you also called for a, a motion. So once we started the motion, then it's like you were, it's like you were startled that we weren't going to have the public comment. But you're the one that started the motion.
Yeah, and the people from the audience. We usually not have, we not have a lot of attendance. And always I said, when a lot of people came, it's people cares and people's, you know, wanna, they care about our township. They're coming to speak, and I want to give opportunity to people to participate. And then that's why I open to the public, so. Okay, so we have a few amendments, which is, some members of the board would like to have two members. We're not identifying who is the member, right? It's just open for two members. So I have to come back later around and present who is going to be the board member taken right now. And then Paul says we're going to extend some of the people that expire their term, because some members' term expired. So that's the, that will be the amendments, correct?
Yeah. Can I give it a try?
Well, I mean, I mean, we amend right now the rules in the, that's all, that's all we're doing right now.
I know. What I'm saying is can I give it a try to make the motion? Okay, thank you. Stop me if I mess it up. I move to approve the Residential Open Space Committee bylaws as amended. Changing up to 12 members to be up to 13 members. And up to one but not more than two members shall be a member of the township board. And relative to expiring terms, members who've terms have expired shall continue to serve until a replacement has been appointed by the board.
I'll second.
Okay. All right, it's going to be a roll call.
Clerk Newbeck, yes. Treasurer Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
No.
Trustee Alamothu?
Yes.
Trustee Ritchie?
Yes.
Trustee Tetter?
Yes.
Supervisor Aliaga?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to one.
I'd like to make a motion to request appointment to the board, to the Residential Open Space Committee, myself.
Clarification?
Yeah.
Who, is he allowed to appoint himself, or does the supervisor appoint the?
I saw it's coming from me.
Numbers.
Let me check your bylaw during that.
Right.
What section of what we?
Brittany? That helps.
If it's like it.
Yeah.
If it's like, I think it's.
It's the bylaws, or, yeah.
Is it the supervisor recommends and the majority vote approves?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's like every other subcommittee in the township. The township supervisor makes a recommendation and then the Board of Trustees votes, and you need a majority vote to affirm that.
Okay. Thank you for clarification. We're good. All right. All right.
But we're not good.
What, so you're not going to make a motion to put me on the agenda?
Yeah, yeah. We're moving to, it's not in the agenda, so. Right, right. Excuse me, please, the language, please. Order, please, the, people have to, language. All right. We're going to the third item.
Point of order.
Excuse me.
Yeah, I'm asking to make a comment. That's all.
Sure, yeah, you can make a comment, yeah.
I, I just find it shocking, there's a lot of people in the room who, who I think feel like the board doesn't take enough interest in open spaces. And here you've got one trying to do it, and they're trying not to let him be on the committee. Just think about that. It just, it just kills me. I've lived here over 50 years. I spend day after day not going on Facebook because of the attacks that come from these folks. Because, because I, because we don't do what they want, and they feel they're in charge of everything. They want to exclude me from that committee. I've given 10 years of my life to this, to this position, this township. I'm a CPA, I've been a CFO, I've been a COO. I make way less money doing this than I did in the private sector. And the thanks I get from some members on this board, not even willing to make the motion to let me participate in something they feel strong about, while complaining that I don't want to participate. It's, it's unbelievable to me, and I'm sorry I couldn't hold this back. It upsets me. I've proven myself to do what, I try to think what is best. I understand people don't always agree with me. And I will point out, it was my motion, after hearing from resident Joetta Kuntz, after trustee, um, Morocco would not get appointed as, as a trustee, she's made an impassioned plea and said, you know, our forefathers said, "People who have a differing opinion than you deserve a seat at the table." I thought about that at that meeting. I was not going to vote for Sam as a trustee, because he and I agree on a lot of different things. I have the full.
Please, please.
And, and based on Joetta Kuntz's comment, I listen to what people, I listen to what the audience says. I do. I listened to her and it moved me, and I made an impassioned plea to appoint trustee Morocco, because his, he's got a right to have a seat at the table too. Okay? He supports some people. They have a voice. My plea was strong enough that the first motion for him didn't even get a second. My plea got him appointed. And the thanks I get from him is he doesn't want me to have a seat at the table. Imagine that. I'm finished.
Thank you.
I'll respond.
No, hold on, I, I just respond. I don't know what attacks on Facebook from me you're talking about to you, because I did not attack any board member directly from Facebook. I did not. Secondly, when I ran the last year of the election, I ran with the platform of create the open space. So I implement that, that came from me, not from you, Paul. And I never, I never ever says that you not participate in nothing. I don't know where they're coming from. And when I was told that, I was thinking then, I will get a submit, a recommendation in the next following meeting, because it's not in the agenda. We are surprising or resting right now, but amending a lot of things that people don't know. We already present an agenda to public. I never says I want to appoint you, I never said publicly that. It happened too fast. And you saying that I put some comments on Facebook, I never done.
I retract the comment.
Please, I have the floor. You see, when you have the, when you have the floor, you not like to people to interrupt you. But when I have the floor, you can cut me and that's totally fine. I don't think this is appropriate either, Paul. I respect you, Paul. I, I, I respect you a lot. I never went in public and say anything. I just stick. Right now, I promise people I'm going to do something. I intend to deliver every single thing I promised to the people. No. Trustee Morocco.
Yeah, I don't really care what Paul said about me, but my, um, my concern with him being on there is that he's been vocally against the open space committee and are looking into ordinances and putting protections in place. And, um, he's against changing the planning commission, which directly reflects open space. And I don't see him as an asset to the, to being part of our committee. I see him more as somebody who's spying on us and then going to use it against us possibly to, uh, to do a better job in the future. So that's just my personal opinion of what I think about him participating in our group that we worked so hard to get. That, that's it. That's how that works.
Trustee Alamothu?
Yeah, I'm going to keep my comments germane to the topic, but I, I do believe that Treasurer Brown's intentions are pure. I do believe he embraces open space despite some differences between certain board members. I think he would bring a unique, open and important perspective to the board. I do know, happen to know his past and his history of support of open spaces. I don't think there's any greater example than him championing the purchase of that property at Clarkston Road in Southeaston for potential enjoyment by township residents. It was, frankly, put him at odds with, with a lot of people close to him. And so, that, all of that being said, and, and aside from unfortunately some of the vitriol that's been exchanged tonight, I do think one's head's cool that he would make for a good individual and a good representation of the board. I don't think we should discourage anybody from participating in any committee so long as it's their will. And I think we're better because of it.
Sure. Um, I want to tell the public, I'm a good listener. When you guys come here and attend and talk, I like to listen. And I agree with, with the comments of Jim and the board. I'm not here to exclude participation of anybody. I don't have any problem, Paul, that you can, like, that you can be in the, I mean, I, right now, I can, I have to make a motion, Bernie? Or how the, how it's, what is it?
If you want to make a recommendation tonight, the appropriate way is to make a motion that you would recommend a board member to sit, of your choice, to sit on the open space committee. That's your prerogative, and then the vote, the board would take a vote to affirm your appointment.
Okay, all right.
Just before you do it, I want to apologize. I think when I, again, I, social media is, it's just so bad. I've stopped looking at it, because it upsets me so much. I'm, I'm, I am, while I am in a public position, I'm an introvert, just tries to not be one. And that stuff gets to me, and I apologize. You've not posted anything that I've seen negative about me on social media, and I was wrong to say that, or, or insinuate. And I apologize to you for that.
Thank you. Yes, trustee Morocco.
I'm confused. Why would we appoint, make an appointment for Paul to be on a board when we don't have the appointment for the people who already are our chairman and board members not to be on the board? That's crazy. Why don't we just wait to, if Jose feels that he wants to appoint Paul, why don't we wait till he does it with the other people who have now still not been appointed because of this addition to the board? That's what should have happened tonight, was the two people whose terms are expired should have been appointed. Didn't even make it to the agenda, and now we're appointing people who weren't even on the board. So to me, it seems like this thing's cooked up a little weird. That's all.
So you don't have to, there's no duty of the supervisor to make any recommendation tonight. He has the option under the bylaws you just adopted to make a recommendation to this board of who the board member is who should be appointed to the, may or may not be appointed to the open space committee. That's the supervisor's prerogative. He can come back next meeting if that's, if, if that's his choice.
Trustee Alamato.
I believe that the bylaws we just passed had the change of the people whose terms expired, that they are continuing right now. So no one is kicked off at this point. Everybody who is listed is still continually serving. So the only difference would be, is if Supervisor Aliaga, um, decides to add Treasurer Brown to it tonight. But the other people are still serving as of us passing the bylaws a few minutes ago.
That's accurate. You did pass a motion to, to increase your membership to, up to 13 and up to two board members as well. Um, and then to extend those existing terms.
Okay. So so I can make a motion, right? At this point, all right. I will make a motion for Treasurer Brown to be in the, including the open space committee as a second liaison member for the Board of Trustees in the open space, in good faith.
Second.
Okay. It's going to be a roll call or?
Uh, it can be, simple majority.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we're going to.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Now, um, as you know, the last board meeting, I recommend two individuals at the planning commission. The reason I did that is because I believe in my heart, and I promise to the people that I will make some changes in our township. A lot of you, when I knock your door and I talk to you, has many concerns about the development and what's going on. And many of you told me you guys don't want to be like Troy or Rochester. And I, as you see today, I listen. Sometimes I can change my mind. And, and you know, I disagree. I believe the incentive has serious concern about this. But I can change, because at the end of the day, it's about you, it's about improve our township. Today, I bring the same recommendation to the board. And this recommendation is not because I just was looking around or tried to fight with some members here. This recommendation is because the people told me they want to change. And like, less than a year, you guys spoke in the polls and see that you want to change. That's why I bring in the recommendations again. I believe that we can do better. I not represent tonight my opinion, I represent our community opinion. That's why I recommended these two appointments tonight. And I hope some of the members support me, like you show. I showed you today publicly that I can change in benefit to our public. And, and I hope that today some of the members see that that's why you want. And I believe most of you are here to speak up. Before, we already know what this is about, all of us, we know what it's about. I would like to open the floor to the residents, since I believe a lot of residents want to speak up today. If that's okay from the board. If, please, someone would like to come to the podium, speak up, state your name and address, please. Any input, comments, or concern, welcome to the township.
I'll start it off. My name is Sharon Basell. I live at 5616 Knob Hill Circle, Clarkston, Michigan. I have taken a lot of time to get my thoughts together, so I wasn't just rambling. So I'm mostly going to read this. Um, I'm here today to support Supervisor Aliaga's nominations for the planning committee. My first comment is the need for clarification regarding the posting of this meeting agenda and the associated documents. I have been looking since the last meeting to find the agenda for this meeting and the supporting documents. And they, as far as I know, Robert's Rules of Order say they're supposed to be posted two weeks before. That's generally what I have always known. They were posted, I think, last Friday. So I was scrambling all weekend to make sure that I was up to date. I don't, I believe that is definitely negligent for whoever has to put that out. The only way that I found out about this controversy was through the Clarkston News. But then I scoured the Clarkston News, as I always do, to see what you guys are up to. I've never come here before, but I watch what's going on. And there was no posting, like the legal postings that you guys have to have for meetings and things that were going to be done. I've lived here for five years, and I have kept myself informed of most of the important issues that are confronting our, our township and doing my own very thorough homework, as I always do. I took time not only to read the minutes, but also to review the last tape of your meeting and many, many more after that. And I have to honestly say that I was extremely disappointed by the bullying I observed by particular members of this board. It was embar- It was embarrassing to see this play out on the internet. I would like to remind all of the Board of Trustees, the Planning Commissioners are, you are all charged with representing this community, of which I am a participant. And this community had voiced an opinion by electing Mr., excuse me if I pronunciate wrong, Aliaga to the position of supervisor, to keep his campaign vision foremost in his decisions. The sniping that has occurred at the last meeting and at the previous meetings that I have watched was really, really unnecessary. Whether or not the, the Planning Commissioners should be receiving, the previous Planning Commissioners should be receiving a phone call, is something that could've been addressed privately by all of you. But by having watched numerous instances play out between the trustees and commissioners, especially over the last two years, I can empathize with Mr. Aliaga's decision not to place phone calls to at least one of the people that came before this trustee board last time. There is absolute personal animosity amongst you guys. It's time to put on your big boy, big girl pants and get over yourselves. You are there to serve us, not to air dirty laundry that should be talked behind. I get you can't have a quorum, I get the rules. I've done a lot of stuff in our previous residence like this. Last, I ended up going back, because last December twenty-second, I actually accidentally watched that meeting, didn't see it was, not twenty-twenty-three. And I personally observed one of the commissioners and a trustee accuse a not present, this is the Planning Commission, not, a not-present trustee member, and someone else who was just CC'd on an email. They were not there to defend themselves. They had one day, like the rest of you that on the Planning Committee, had to review a document. And the banter that went back and forth at that meeting was honestly, it was embarrassing. But I have also read a lot of stuff, and trustees, I'm gonna go down the list, have refused to recuse themselves when they will personally benefit from their vote, have chosen to hire family members into high-paying positions, have refused to hear the voices of community members that vehemently disagree with appointing a non-resident to the Planning Commission, and were denied on numerous occasions, but denied a vote regarding the four-day work week that has been voted in. I heard Mr. Aliaga's comment, that he had been out of, he had been, sorry, out in the community, speaking to residents regarding their satisfaction of the current planning of their community, and then was belittled by a trustee that he wasn't the only member who was elected. He never said that. Comments were made at your meetings that weren't, that they weren't a packed house, that certain trustees aren't hearing complaints, and trustees should be telling, shouldn't be telling residents that Walden, the complex across the street from me, across Sashaba, that they were making bad choices in buying in this community. Understand that just because residents aren't coming to meetings and causing a debate and arguing with you, doesn't mean that we are happy with the Walden project at all. When I read that this board had moved ahead with Phase Four before ever completing Phase Three of that project, I, it was very disheartening. Hearing that the, last time, that the original seventeen-acre, um, park that was voluntarily reduced to seven acres, which I did not know, and then to understand that a twenty, twenty-thousand community space is now the responsibility of the Minimire, is unacceptable for all sorts of reasons. We live right on the other side of Sashaba and, and learning that bringing the Minimire into this project is going to directly impact our neighborhood, then finding out that the traffic study that has been done is no matter what modifications you make at the Walden and Sashaba exit, it's still gonna be rated the worst at any. I'm not gonna be able to get back to my house. I'm gonna have to be going down, maybe up to Clintonville and back down all the way to Walden, to not sit in an hour's worth of traffic during rush hour. And right now, it takes me forty-five minutes to get up to be able to turn right, cuz everybody's cutting over the lane. My hus- husband and I watched in dismay when all the trees were cleared from this Walden site, and were extremely distressed, as was mentioned by Mr. Morocco last time, that there was no barrier given to them to exclude them from this, seeing all this stuff, and that there was nothing you guys can do. And this was an absolutely avoidable issue by just leaving a barrier of trees. And it's inexcusable that whether it's the Commission or this board did not do that for the six residents that are majorly impacted. I was in tears, honestly, when the first time I saw all those trees go down. Like, these poor people. They lived there for God knows how long, their value of their houses has just plummeted. This township is trusting that the developers are going to do everything that is in the plans that you approved, and this practice needs to be improved by this township. There were huge mistakes made by this township in the planning and building of the Hills of Pine Knob complex where I live, because of the lack of true inspections. My husband and I hired an inspector, I did not come before this board when this was going on, to air our dirty laundry, okay? So I want you to know that I was tempted. The inspector came up with a forty-plus page punch list of the things that that builder did wrong and needed to be corrected. But the most serious of it, which I brought and my husband brought, to the building director, I guess he was at the time, was that the demising walls, which are the fireproofing walls between our condo units, were incorrectly approved and then incorrectly done. So Jim and I demanded of the building director that he go through every, and re-inspect every single condo, so we didn't burn down. Now, I happened to have worked for Barton Mallow a long time ago, so I knew what I was talking about. They did that, but the middle units weren't built yet. And then, when the builder finished those middle units, nobody inspected them for a known fire hazard. This person across the street from us who moved in, we gave him the name of the inspector. And he went up there, cuz he knew what it was, and it wasn't done right. So it's an inspection issue. We also had an open sewer line that was buried inside of our drywall, that was green-tagged, said it was inspected, but never sealed. Okay? I can go on. We were flooding in the back, because we had to have the engineer come out from the township, because they didn't do it correctly. I could've come to you with all of these things, but I made the choice to follow the rules, because at that point, I was very sure that this board was not going to make that builder amend anything, cuz it's already been done, just like Walden.
Okay.
I mean, almost done.
Okay.
You didn't, you didn't stop, Mr. Saladad, or whatever his name is, I can't pronounce it correctly.
Sure.
So I, I have a short.
I give you a second.
Okay? So after the engineer came out, we stopped flooding, but our board, of Hills of Pine Knob Board, has had to spend so much of our community money fixing things, because the inspections are not being done. And I am asking you, whoever is in charge of going over to Walden, actually do the inspections that need to be done. But I am requesting that the trustees, commissioners, employees of my township start listening more seriously to the residents. I am also requesting that this board stop their bickering, especially in public, start working as a team, and to put their egos aside. Cuz when somebody comes up here and says, "It's not my ego," it is their ego. Mr. Aliaga, I am asking you to please resubmit your recommendations for Mr. Scarborough and Mr. Suter, to be appointed to the Planning Commission, and that this Board of Trustees approve the appointments that Mr. Aliaga has the right and duty to do, as we do not need to settle for less qualified people who are willing to volunteer, God bless them, but they are less qualified, just like Mr. Morocco says. I don't know any of you guys, but as a five newly, new resident who's trying to be involved, this bickering has to stop. You don't get along, I've gone back, and this has been going on for years. It needs to stop.
Thank you. I just wanna remind, um, the public, it's just five minutes for comments, okay? Uh, who would like to speak, others? Oh, okay. State your name and address, please.
Sir, my name is James Basell, five six one six, five six one six Knob Hill Circle. That's my wife. So, uh, as Sharon said, we've been members of this community for about five years. We have followed along with what's been going on with the, the Planning Commission. Uh, what I just wanna say is that what I have seen and what I've read with the Planning Commission is nothing more than a good old boys' network. There's five people on there right now. There was a comment among one of the trustees that people don't seem to care because they don't show up for the meetings. Well, guess what? People have shown up because we care. We need to vote these two people in as commissioners. The reason being is to hold these, this Planning Commission responsible, because what they need to understand is that they report to the community, it's their responsibility to have the best interests of the community and its citizens, not of developers, not of builders, not of consultants, but the people that live in this community. And as Sharon said, we were horrified with what happened at Walden and Sashaba. To remove all those trees, we felt compassion for our neighbors that live in that area. There were no trees left. The Planning Commission has a responsibility to hold the builder, the developer, and anybody accountable for that work that's done. And for them to allow that to happen is unbelievable, unacceptable. My wife shared several things that happened to us personally, that were not taken care of, that we had to fight with our builder, with this township, to get done for our condo and for our community. And as Sharon said, we've had to take on expense as a community ourselves, out of our own pocket, for the lack of planning, the lack of follow-through from this Planning Commission. We need Bill and another individual nominated to provide perspective from the community, instead of this good old boy network that seems to be happening every day, all the time, with all the projects that we see in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Amy Weeks, six zero four five Pine Needle Court. And, um, I have been involved with several meetings, board meetings, Planning Commission meetings over the last three years, when this Walden project became, you know, inception. I actually met with Dick, uh, former Supervisor Kittle at that time, as well as Mr. Oppman, with different ideas. We had a local task force of residents that were trying to work to make that the best development it could be for our township. We had one chance to get it right. And at that time, Dick even recommended that I apply for the Planning Commission. And it wasn't because of my experience, I have none. It was because I brought new perspective, fresh ideas, and it was something that he thought could be valuable to the Planning Commission. Unfortunately, with my personal life and my job, that's just something that I did not have time to commit to at that time. But I think we have residents that are willing to stand up, that can offer that fresh perspective, and it's time that we, we make a change. So as you're considering, um, your reevaluation for the appointments to the Planning Commission, I want you just to consider a few things. So first, I think we can all agree that the Walden Village project here, as well as that Sashaba quarter, is all part of what our master plan has designated as the town center, right? So when you think of a town center, do you think of what you see outside of these doors? Or do you think of what I sent you in an email yesterday with pictures of gathering spaces, amphitheaters? Um, hopefully you guys all received that email, Paul. I don't think you did, cuz I didn't have your email, but I can go ahead and forward that.
Yeah, I'd like to.
And these are all, these aren't, you know, far-off communities. These are communities with similar demographics, neighboring communities, Fenton, Norville, Milford. There's no reason that we couldn't have had that here, an independent township. So I've definitely, I, I think you're thinking of things like charm, character, varied architecture, public amenities and gathering spaces, walkability. Those are all elements and visions within our master plan. And the Planning Commission needs to hold true to that and try to incorporate those elements in different designs. So Treasurer Brown, sorry, I will forward that email to you, but you said that you do listen to what the audience says. I sincerely hope that you do that tonight. I sincerely hope that we see that, um, in your role as the, in the Open Space Committee going forward. Um, one thing you mentioned in the last meeting is you stressed the importance of having young, attracting young families to the area. School enrollment is down. So while it may be debatable, if I am considered young these days, I do have three young kids in, in the schools at Clarkston. This is a place that I'd like to stay. One is in Young Five, she just started, so we have a long ways to go here. And, you know, so I think it gives me a little bit of credibility to talk about what attracts young families. Um, have we done any research on what is, is driving young families to move to certain areas? How do we attract that, that desired demographic here? And my personal opinion, which of course is subjective, is, you know, I chose the physical location of my house because of the proximity to downtown Clarkston Main Street. So having the walkability there and all of the amenities and atmosphere, that's what attracts young families. It's not, you know, a bunch of office buildings that all look home ingenious, as well as town, townhomes and Goldfish Swim School. That, that does not make a town center, right? That does not bring an atmosphere that people want to gather up. In addition, PUDs should be mutually beneficial. So typically, they include small clusters of lots in conjunction with other usable spaces, open space, recreational amenities. So in this case, for Walden Village, the developer got density bonuses, and the township got what in return? I ask, I'm, I'm not really sure. A dead unusable parcel along I seventy-five that has already been partially cleared, I, I feel like there was a lot left on the table from the township to make that a much better development. So I'm not really here to debate the past votes, or even Brent's resume, who I know he came up here and kinda rattled that off for us. Um, it, it's definitely his qualif- qualifications may have gotten him a seat at the table, but his accomplishments should keep him there. And I didn't hear anything about what he's done that actually benefited the community. So what has he done to push back on developers and to make everything as best as it could be? I only heard what his qualifications were. Um, and then in many Planning Commission meetings that I attended, the majority of pushback or requests for improvements came from Sam, or David, I think, Borsomoff was his name. Ron, I, and, and I did hear you speak up often and, and keep an open mind about these things, and also, but there were, well, a lot of internal resistance, particularly from Brent. And it was that same sort of conflict that we're seeing that's not resulting in a benefit to the township. Um, it's more of just trying to shoot down Sam's ideas. If you wanna know why that we are supporting change and why we support Sam, is cuz when we attend these meetings, he's voicing the same desires that we have in the community. We wanna preserve open space. We want to have different gathering areas. So it's interesting to us when we hear opposition to those views. So I, I really hope that, um, you will take everything into consideration, all the comments that you hear tonight, and do what the community is recommending to appoint the new members to the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, and just five minutes, please.
Gillian Fuller, uh, five two six four Glenwood Creek, Clarkston, Michigan. I've been a Clarkston resident for fifteen years. My children attend one of our public elementary schools, and I teach in a neighboring district. My husband and I moved here fifteen years ago as a place to begin our family. He was from Holly, and I came from Romeo. If you know those two towns, you know that they have a small-town charm. We wanted a place to raise our future children that resembled the coziness and comfort of our own upbringing. We chose Clarkston because it offered just that. It had our cute downtown sidewalks, plenty of green space, and the congestion was several miles up the road. We have made Clarkston our home and established many close friendships here. Families just like our own who moved to Clarkston for its charm, or have remained here for generations because it just feels like home. All of us love this community and are grateful for the opportunities it gives to our families. But we are tired and we are busy. Many of us have two working parents who are shuttling their kids to sporting events in the evening. Our priority is our family, and we simply don't have the time to keep up with the planning, developments, and meetings that are happening in our community. But just because we are busy doesn't mean we are unaware. We've noticed the traffic becoming more and more congested, the uptick in accidents, the trees and greenery being wiped out by bulldozers, the homes being built too close to the road, the apartment complexes going up. We see our community faltering, we see it losing, losing its charm. We see it losing its charm. We see it becoming unsafe for our children, and we want it to change. When it came to election time, a group of us discussed Mr. Aliaga. I'll be honest, many of us were unsure of supporting him. However, he promised change, a change that we knew our community needed. We spoke with our ballots, and we elected Mr. Aliaga in hopes that he would change the direction our community seems to be going towards. Mr. Aliaga is making good on his promise with his attempted appointments of two new Planning Commission members. These appointments have visions for our community that align with what the voters want: open spaces, tree preservation, protection of wetlands, improving the traffic flow, and more organized developments. These appointments have the ability to change the trajectory of our community away from becoming a Troy and back to preserving our old-school charm. Unfortunately, Mr. Aliaga is being stonewalled. In December, our trustees did not approve these appointees. Rather, they claimed that our current situation was fine. If your community supervisor is elected on the campaign promise of change, I assure you that things are not fine. We did not simply reelect Aliaga because we are okay with the status quo. We elected Mr. Aliaga because things are not okay, because they need to change. Continuing with the way things are is exactly not what your constituents want. As trustee members, you have an obligation to the community. Whatever personal issues, disagreements, or promises that have been made are not applicable when it comes to the promise you made to serve us. We are asking you to listen, to do what is right, and allow this change to happen by approving Mr. Aliaga's appointments this evening. Thank you.
Bernie Kuzno, 5728 Nob Hill Circle. This has been a good meeting in a lot of ways. I'm hearing things that I saw myself. And to hear my neighbors tell what I see that's going on in Clarkston is unbelievable. I think what's happened here on Walden, that there should be a hold on the arrangements that have been made for the development there. It should be modified to incorporate 25% minimum, reestablishing trees, and look at the modifications to be, to what these people are saying, to what is going on in our community. This is not what we moved to here to Clarkston to see. This is butchering. It's butchering our community, and it's not right. There's a lot of things that we can understand. I come from the building industry. There's a lot of things I've dealt, I've done things that were never done before. So, and I've dealt with a lot of people from all industries, unions, non-union, the whole shot. We did what was right all the time. Or if we didn't do it, we got it done where everybody was satisfied. But I think what I hear tonight, we're asking you, it's not a stop order, but to hold what's going on on Walden and to put what should be there and incorporates and establishes, reestablish more vegetation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Diane Cisero, 5652 Nob Hill Circle. I thank you for the work you do. It sounds like you've kind of been attacked a little bit, and I don't mean to do that. But I would like to give you my perspective. I spent 10 years working for Polte Homes. And unfortunately, I was on the other side of the fence. And when the subdivisions would come in and the homeowners would try to stop the destruction of the trees, Polte lawyered up, no offense. The homeowners could not come up with the money that Polte could. When I saw this come up on Walden, I thought, oh my God, here we go again. And here we are again. But that's not my purpose here. My purpose here is the last five years I spent at Polte, I worked in the Southwest, in Arizona, in the Boulders, and in California, bringing up senior communities. And one of the things that was always amazing to me was, once the builder left the community, it was left up to the elective board to clean up the mess. And I saw it happen in a good way, and I saw it happen in a bad way. And I got to tell you, Bill Scarborough, we had a mess. And he cleaned it up with other people on the board. Greg was one of them, and we had other people I'm not mentioning. And always transparent. Anytime I wanted to know what our financials were on the board, I'd go to the website. There's no question why, you know, I don't understand why you wouldn't want someone like this. I mean, he's already warned us. You know, we've put money into the roads and he's already warned us, we're going to be spending more money on the entrance coming in from Royal St. George. So we know, guys, you're going to get a special assessment. Plan for it. No big surprise. Bill tells us, Greg tells us. I trust them. And I think they'd do a great job on this board. I heard you, Paul, talking for open space, and I did hear your people do a little bickering. And I'm okay with that. I mean, you know, it's kind of hard to be in front of a group of people and not talk. But I really, I mean, if there's a reason why you wouldn't want Bill or the other person on the board, I'd like to hear it. I mean, if you could tell me, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to ask that question, but I really would like to know why you don't want them to be appointed. Thank you for listening, and thank you for what you do for us. Carrie, you do a great job. I mean, I am so impressed with what you do. When I work on the elections and I see what she does, top-notch. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name, address, and just five minutes, please. If you need extra time, you can request.
I won't take any extra time. I think everybody pretty much said everything I need to say. My name is Mary Ann Hallett. I live at 5799 Pine Breeze Drive, Clarkston, Michigan. And I just want to come up and say that I support Supervisor Aliaga with his nominations for the board and that we do need change. And he was elected with almost 50% of the voters. And so I think, you know, we need, he hears the people. And ask and you shall receive. I mean, this is amazing. And was it Sharon? I could go down each one of her bullet points, and she was right on with everything that she said. We live in Pine Breeze Estates. We purchased that property 24 years ago. And one of the things we loved about it was that there was barriers between each house's trees, lots of trees. Matter of fact, we brought in 50 pine trees on our one-acre lot. We put a barrier up on the road. And I mean, it's great. And to see what's going on in the community now with all the trees being tore down, we don't want to be Troy. We don't want to be a big city. We want to be a small city, a small-feeling city, a small community. And I think that's what everybody else wants, too. Thank you. Oh, I want to leave you with one. I heard recently from Congressman Clay Higgins, and he made a comment. He said, "I'm not a politician. I'm here to serve."
Thank you.
I want to make just a suggestion from someone who is hard of hearing. This microphone picks people's voices up, but those microphones do not. It was very difficult to hear it online, and it's very difficult to hear it in the room. And I just want to make a quick comment about the recommendations. I won't reiterate all the other things that people have said, and I totally agree with that. And I predict, if we don't see a change now, at the end of the year, we're going to be in the exact same position, with people being very unhappy with the Planning Committee. And while we have two very qualified individuals who are willing to volunteer their time to take the chance of missing that and have nobody else in a year from now to put forth would be a shame, and it would be a loss for us. Thank you.
My name is Jessica Krug, and I live at 6396 Heron Parkway, which is actually, I could walk here. It's right over there. I have, I have lived in Clarkston my whole entire life, went to Clarkston Elementary, Clarkston Middle School, Clarkston High School. And I am just completely gutted by what is happening over here at Walden and Sashawal Road. I have lived here in this location for two years now, and I have kids that go to three different schools, the high school, the middle school, and Clarkston Elementary. And the traffic is unbelievable at multiple times of the day. And now, where I live, I can hear everything that is being said at Pine Knob. I can't sleep with my windows open in the summertime now because there's no trees to buffer the noise from Pine Knob. I love Pine Knob, but I don't like to hear choice words that my children can't hear, which is what I hear now with my windows being open. This over here, I know that school enrollment, it was mentioned, might be down, but there's already 1,500 kids, over 1,500 kids that go to Clarkston High School. When I went to Clarkston High School, we didn't have ninth grade in a different building. We were all together. It's not like that anymore because we can't facilitate all these children that we already have in the community in these buildings. The ratio for kids to a teacher is 20 to 1. And the buses, my children ride the bus, they ride public transportation. We can walk to Clarkston Elementary, and it takes an hour to get home because of the traffic and because we don't have people to drive the buses. My daughter's bus this week was already 10 minutes late because they don't have subs for the buses. And we're bringing in all these new homes. How are we going to facilitate these children? My son goes to Sashawal Middle School, and they're already sitting three kids to a seat. That doesn't seem very safe to me, but that's what they're already doing because it's so crowded. There's so many children. And I love this community because it does have the small-town feel. My husband and I, we moved to Davison, and we came back to Clarkston because we didn't want to live in a bigger city. Davison, in some parts, has a small-town feel, but there is just developments going up like crazy there. And we left and came back here because we wanted the small-town feel. We didn't want to live in Troy, or we would live there. Clarkston is a small-town community, and I think a lot of people here, I haven't really heard anybody say that they're excited about what's happening over there. And I don't understand why we can't do something better. And I know that Jose, I support his decision to appoint these people tonight because he said, "Let's preserve our township." And right now, what I'm seeing over there is not preserving anything. It's destruction. And I don't see the good that's coming from it. And I don't think a lot of people here are seeing the good. And I've talked to a lot of people that live in Clarkston, and I haven't really heard one person say that they're happy about what's happening over there. It's very crowded, especially at the Sashawal exit. There's three lights within, like, not even a quarter mile. It's crazy. And growing up here, I grew up over off Big Lake Road, and it used to be country over there. I grew up in Springfield Township, and I moved over here, and it's just, I don't even recognize it anymore. And I just think we need to preserve our township. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address to the board? Anyone online? I think we have somebody online. I think it's Rayloon.
Hello, Rayloon, 9254 Pine Knob Road, Clarkston, Michigan, 48348. First and foremost, I just want to say, I totally, totally walked lockstep with all the comments that were made previously, and especially the first female that spoke and her husband. And then another point that I would like to make is this. We, as residents, we are your employers. We, we're not your employees. You work for us, whether you be township trustees, treasurer, clerk, supervisor, Planning Commission, building inspectors, whatever it is. You work for us. We don't work for you. And numerous times, whether it be tonight or previous meetings, I have made a comment, or others have made comments, and then a board member comes back and says, "Well, this is my rebuttal to that comment." You know what? I'm certain without a doubt in my mind that any of us residents, you could reach us via telephone or email, or invite us to meet you at Starbucks, which is a public place, and have a conversation. But we are not allowed to have this conversation between ourselves and you. And as far as Jose goes, Jose ran on a platform. He was elected well, well past any percentage of anyone else. And so to me, I look at Jose's word like, "You ran on this platform, this is what you told us." Because if I said something to someone, I would be ready to stand behind it. So I completely, completely support what Jose is saying and is trying to get done. The previous supervisor, when he, and I'm not talking about Jerry, I'm talking about Pat Kittle, when he wanted to get stuff done, hey, everything was worked out well before the meeting, and everyone followed in lockstep and obeyed the direction. Jose comes in, and now we've got, you know, we're just going to take the apple cart, turn it upside down, and if Jose said, "Well, tomorrow, I want the weather to change and be 75 degrees and sunny," somebody would say, "Oh, no. I object to that and turn it down." They would not get a vote on it, or he would not get a vote on it, and it wouldn't happen. So I think it's time that people that are elected and they're our employees, because don't forget, folks, there will be an election. And Jose is doing his darndest, and I tried to clean that up by saying "darndest," to get this, to get these agenda items through. And, you know, it's just like people pointed out to you. They go back and they watch the meetings. They listen and see what's happening. And we're just done with it, done with it. You know, we want progress. We don't need progress like it's happening on Walden. We need progress where people work together. Paul's sitting there, and I like Paul, but Paul, you're sounding like the little kid on the school ground, "Hey, I want to be on this open space committee meeting." Okay, fine, you got it. But, you know, work together, folks. Work together. You are our employees. Thank you very much.
Norm, I think Norm wants to speak up, please. Norm, state your name, address, and you have five minutes. I guess, Norm, you need to unmute. Okay, Norm, you have the floor.
Okay. Am I online?
Yes, you are. Yes, you are.
Okay, thanks. First off, thanks for everybody's service. This is tedious.
Norm, please, can you state your address, please?
Oh, yes, I'm Morburg-Freshke, 7199 Deer Lake Court, Clarkston. Yeah, so thanks for serving. It's been, you know, we've heard a lot of opinions. I really haven't heard any other nominee recommendations and, and much there, but the one thing I wanted to bring out is I think on some committee members, there's past votes on open space. We can look at those things very closely, look at the record and how it was voted. I use Encore as an example on Deer, Deer Hill Drive and Seventy-Five and Dixie, which the, the developer came. We did not put much pressure on them to try to change that and that was the current planning committee. We, we went from sixty-four recommended homes to ninety-two. After the submission of sixty-four, we approved ninety-two. How does that happen? And that's the history. Paul, you were, you were there already. You were voting for it. So I think when we look at open spaces, it's something that has been trampled on. It hasn't been following the master plan, which lays out the density from one neighborhood to the next or from, or from neighbor to neighbor, which is being totally disregarded. And those type of things need to be, be put back into focus that that is what this township is about. That's what makes it special. And I don't see the planning commission or the board, a lot of the board members following those things that the residents are looking for and striving for. And so those are my points. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Norm. Anyone else online that would like to address to the board regarding these appointments? Okay. Anyone else from the audience would like to? Okay, all right. So we'll, more comments? Anyone would like to say something? Any trustee Adamato?
I have one. One is a letter given by a resident and I'll quote one of the sentences. "It is always good to have lots of perspectives as citizens of the township. Now, my only question with the two appointees you want, these two appointees also serve on some other subcommittees. So based on what this person is saying, if we want perspectives as citizens of the township, I'm curious why you're not appointing maybe somebody off your list that isn't serving on something already if you're looking to get more involvement from the community."
The process for the planning commission, a lot of people apply. The last time when I brought recommendation, you and, and some of the members asked for experience. And everyone, they apply, I open it to everybody. It was publicized on social media, everything. I got like seventeen applications. Out of seventeen applications, I actually interviewed most of them by phone or face-to-face. And then I saw in those, the current recommendation I bring in tonight, which I brought at last meeting too, are the best people qualified for the vision and what you hear from many residents and from.
But they're serving on other committees already, is my question.
It is, that's no, that's no an issue. I mean, I don't see.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, this person says it's good to have lots of perspectives as citizens of the township.
Talking about one letter, one person, for sure.
Yeah, but a lot of people spoke at the podium. I'm, I'm bringing up what this person wanted.
What is the name of the person?
This is Joette Coontz's letter.
Oh, okay, all right. Yeah, I, I actually talked to Joette and by the way, I got the same letter and that. I actually meet also with Julie Tully. I thank her for her service and, and I spoke also with Brent Savin, that other member that wants to be reappointed. I met with him, I talked to him and I thanked both of them and just let you know. So I read the letter and I actually met with them as well. Anyone else?
So, you know, I'm trying to figure out how to try and have you understand my position. And I think you deserve to hear that. I've gotten a number of emails. Most of them probably were unhappy they sent it to me because what I sent back took me an hour to write to every one of them, generally speaking, pretty lengthy. I think people deserve that and, and I, and they responded back again and sort of recognized some of my points. So I guess, in this particular case, I think we've been very supportive of Supervisor Aliaga. And we've had four nominations for planning commission, one coming from Supervisor Fisher, three coming from Supervisor Aliaga. The board voted for those in each case. We're a hundred percent up till now approving who he has brought. I don't know if you realize that or not. And I say that for this reason. There are people who don't think across the street is bad and I can, and I can prove it. They're buying houses there. They have a different perspective and a different desire and so it, it's not one, it is not all one side. And my responsibility is to understand that there are some other perspectives still. I already said this earlier in the meeting somewhat passionately, that the other side deserves a seat at the table. You're all very passionate for your opinions and like I said, up till now, I have supported, the board has supported a hundred percent of who has brought. In this case, he now has two nominations. I have asked, going back to November, early December, let's discuss a compromise. You, you get another one you want and I want someone that I want. The conversation's not gone anywhere. It hasn't been discussed since. As a board member, I think I have the right to ask for that. Again, if that happens, right, because I, I'm representing a contingent too. And they, they pointed out, he won absolutely. I was the first person the next day to congratulate him and did so on Facebook. He beat me. Okay? Fifty-two percent of the residents voted for someone other than Jose. I'm just, there are other people in this community that didn't vote for him. There are my constituents too. And so I, I've supported Jose up to this point and I'm ready to continue to support him on eighty percent of his nominations, right? Because if, if he agrees to a compromise and except he's getting one right now and one that the rest of the board wants to support, that's how politics work. These are political appointments. That's what it is. And so I'm prepared to do that. That will, that will mean we will have had, of course, three of his appointments have been for the same seat because two of them ended up for reasons unknown to us, had, had to move out of, out of, out of town. So they had to be reappointed. But he will have then, there'll be two seats he's appointed and one other one new from Jerry Fisher. That is change. I just don't want wholesale change and, and that's why I'm holding out to get an agreement to split the difference on this one. So that's, that's my, that's my position. You deserve to hear from me. And I think it's been brought up. I've offered to have coffee with every person that's emailed me and some of those folks I've had coffee with in the past. Ready to do that anytime and because it's easier one-on-one, face-to-face, to share positions with people and be allowed to have an impact where you have a better chance to sway my opinion on a more personal basis. Because my opinion can be swayed. Joette Coontz did it. I, I talked about that earlier. That's, that's why, that's why I'm still holding out. And I think both the candidates would be good candidates. I'm just not a hundred percent on, on doing two replacements right now. I want, I want to keep one that I support. That's what I'm going to do at this meeting.
I would like to say something for sure. The board of, is, when I open first the floor for public comment for you, you guys, everybody have a chance. Now we are in the stage where we have now the board members speaking. The board of commissioners has seven members. And in the, one got reappointed with Tim Lockery and one of my recommendations got approved. So out of seven, actually, I got, I would say, two. It wasn't three, Paul. It was two, but.
You brought three nominations and we approved all three.
Yeah, but currently I have two.
No, I understand.
Yeah, all right.
We agree.
Yeah, all right. Secondly, I mean, I, I do understand, back in 2012, previous supervisor actually got six appointments at one time, six appointments just in one. It was a huge change. And, and I know that. But anyways, I just, right now I recommend in two. Two that I believe is going to do a good job and everything. Just I want to clarify here what we're saying. I just, I just, I was in just three new members out of seven. We currently, okay. All right, I just want to make sure of it. Well, Paul, seeing I still have the floor, few minutes early before everybody spoke, you asked me, Jose, you spoke. You were really, you raised your voice and says, "It's not fair." You asked to the public how it's possible and I don't want to help you to be in the open space then. And I decided, I said, "You know what? I'm going to change my mind. I have the public." And I said, "So, Paul, I'm going to support you to be in the open space." Now I asking you to support me, to have my, my nominees, the people that I believe should be there and I ask you now your support to support me to appoint Joe Sutter and Mr. Scarborough. You see, you asked me in front of the public, you told the public that I wouldn't change my mind, but I did. I showed the public that I'm willing to work with them because I know how the votes, but I showed. I told you publicly, "Sure, Paul, I will make the motion for you to be in open space" and I showed goodwill from me. Jim, you asked me, Jose, I think will be fair for have Paul Brown serving open space, show a goodwill. I did. I asking you, trustee Jim Danner, to support me in my recommendations because I was willing to listen both of you when you guys addressed to the public. Ron, Terry, I know you, we have some disagreements in the past, but I show you by support the motion for Paul Brown in open space and I'm willing to work with you guys. I asking you in front of the public to support me this time. I know bringing a bad character of people, bringing decent good people to the board. You see, when I run in the election in the past, he is right, I won by forty-seven percent, but guess what? Historically, the last person that won the big numbers was Supervisor Kittle with thirty-seven. This time I got forty-seven, which is ten percent more than never recorded. Out of thirteen precincts on Election Day, I won thirteen precincts. But when I was absentee, I lost one precinct. So, and now I have the support of the people and by the way, from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank all of you who come here and support me. I know you cares and I appreciate that. Thank you, thank you. It means a lot to me for you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Kerry, I ask you for your support, please. I ask you for support me in my decision, motion. People is taking time from their house to be here because they care and they want your support. I showed my support for Paul. I did. So I now is, I asking you to support me. That's all I'm going to say tonight. Thank you.
I have a quick comment on that.
Sure.
You should have supported Paul out of the goodness of your heart, not because you wanted something back. So I don't like that game of politics and that one being brought out in the open like that. Secondly, I guess when Walden happened, you were on this board and you approved it and now all of a sudden you can't stand it. I'm just, I'm confused on that whole thing about the Walden project. If you could explain yourself.
When Supervisor Kittle came, he making public that Nino Savallos is coming and other teams are coming. Those are going to get good amenities like people ask. And if you recall, I voted against the mayor development and all that. I did vote against. I was the only one that voted against it. And when I started walking to the streets talking with many people during the last summit of 2022, I was in touch face-to-face with a lot of people and told me, "Jose, we don't want that. We need a change." And I promised people I would make the change. And I didn't flip right on my position. I still stand in front of the people to recommend the change. Okay?
Well, it was August 3rd of 21.
That was May years. That was May years. I voted against Myers. Myers. I voted against Myers. Okay? All right, well, I asking you right now in front of the people for your support.
I guess what I would like to hear is, whatever's happening at Walden right now was approved a long time ago. And appointing these two new people on there will not change that patch of property. And every complaint I hear is about that patch of property. So.
We not voting tonight to change Walden. That's about the appointment right now. I'm voting to make a change for the future because that's what I asking right now. I asking for your support right now. People is asking for you to change Walden, support the people. That's all we asking. If you don't want to support the people, that's fine. That's what I asking. Sorry, that's what it is. All right.
I just want to offer a few comments of my own. And I, I just want to, for a point of information for everyone in the audience, I believe it was Ms. Casetta who was up speaking and asked for responses from each of us. Just as, as a point of clarification, my understanding, it's not appropriate during public comment for a board member to respond. This is an opportunity for the people of the audience, for the residents of this community to speak. And so that is why none of us spoke at that time. Now is the time in which you see there's, there's free and open exchange between all the board members. I just thought it was important for you and, and everyone else in the audience to know that. So I've, I've done a lot of homework of my own. Belabored this a little bit perhaps since the last meeting. As everyone knows, who was either in attendance or, or watched the video, I openly supported Joe Sutter. I've known him for about a decade. I find him highly competent and thoughtful individual. I think he will bring back, be a balanced individual on the planning commission. I will continue to support that. Also looking at Mr. Scarborough's credentials, he likewise is qualified to, to do the job. And I, I made no qualms about the fact I was, I wasn't pleased with the way things played out, but I've had conversations with Supervisor Aliaga on my own and we've had some very cordial conversations. And to his credit, I believe that there's been some, some attempt to kind of make things whole, if you will, between him and other members of the planning commission that have not been reappointed. So I'm, I'm at the, I'm at the position tonight that feeling that he's followed through on, on what I've asked. Believe that, you know, and there will be future opportunities to, to appoint additional individuals as terms expire. But I'm not inclined to hold back on supporting both individuals based upon the fact that I believe they're qualified for this position. Having said that, I don't believe in any way that this is the magic dust that we're going to sprinkle on the planning commission and change the, change the nature of things here in the township. Like many of you in the audience, I, I'm a Clarkston grad. I grew up in Springfield Township on Ten Acres. We had a cow, a few pigs. I understand and appreciate rural character. I also was one of those teenagers that hung out in the many fields and had field parties in the very subdivisions that you now live in. So I can appreciate and understand what the changing character of a community means. And Clarkston Independence Township is not what it was when I was just that kid down at, you know, Clarkston Junior High, Clarkston High School. And so I, I think it's important for us to all appreciate and understand the change does happen. Reluctantly it happens. As populations grow, as we, as the word gets out about Independence Township, people are going to continue to want to come here. I don't think anyone wants us to become Troy. And, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to just say, you know, I think that it was an unfair characterization of Mr. Savadat and the way he's been portrayed. And I, and I haven't watched every single planning commission meeting and frankly, may be more engaged in the future. But I want to thank him, Judy Tully, and all the members of the planning commission for their work. Because at the end of the day, the buck stops with this board. And if we don't like change, and I think if you talk to each of us individually and take trustee, or treasurer Brown up and any of us for a cup of coffee, you're going to see that there's not a lot of deviation between where we stand in preserving some character within this community. between where we stand in preserving some character within this community. So I mean, that, you know, that being said, I think it's important for everyone to understand that, even though, uh, facts get skewed once in a while and, and more often than I would care to. So, um, a lot of, a lot of banter there, and I, I do apologize. But, um, I wanna encourage everyone as the new master plan, as I understand it is still in draft form if you wanna truly make changes. It does start there. It's not the end-all-be-all, of course, as we know that the planning commission has discretion. But it's critical that you get engaged at that level to determine what things will look like for the next five, 10 years and beyond. So I'll, again, thank you, everyone, for participating. And again, I will, I will be, um, supporting both instead of just one tonight. I will be supporting both. Again, looking at credentials and what is on the table, not what, what if, or what could be. But based on what is on the table, I will be extending, uh, my support for these two individuals.
Thank you.
Trustee Sam Morocco.
Um, I got a few points I'd like to make. Uh, Jose did reappoint Tim Logren, who was a planning commission member for a long time, who came up for change, who we, uh, works for Robertson Brothers Home, who is a big builder, uh, who, uh, I know I had talked to Jose about it. We felt that he still was a good representation of the township. It wasn't a, uh, clean-the-slate type of thing at that point, you know? Um, and he was reappointed. I've mentioned before at other meetings that the, it's about the perception. It's about direction. There's a lot of failures in this township when it comes to planning. A lot of it, and I'm not gonna blame it on Mr. Carlisle because Mr. Carlisle works under the, the direction of the township. And so does the, the planning department. And when Mr. Kittle was in, uh, the township supervisor, he, um, did a lot of things that sent us into this direction. He, um, he appointed, um, builders and developers and, uh, I'm also a builder, uh, but, um, uh, you know, Brett being the planner for Troy, I brought this up. I think that his perception as his day job, being the planner of Troy, could be a different perception than a preservationist or somebody from the Blue Heron who does that for a living. So it's not about the individuals. It's about your, in my belief, the, the, the way the person handles himself. And where they, the perception, the people. There's, there's been zero case made by anyone of why we wouldn't change the planning commission. Even Mr. Savinat's long speech about all of his education, which I admire. Never mentioned a single development that he was proud of or anything that got done. Just that he was a very educated man. I appreciate that he takes it seriously. And he's as passionate about it as I am. And everyone knows I'm crazy about trying to, you know, control some stuff. So, um, I don't hold any will against anybody on there. I don't think anything about them. They're, they have their own agenda, their own way. I think differently, and I fight till the end to get what I think is important, you know? So that, that, that's, you know, I get criticized for that, but I don't really, uh, care what people think about it, obviously. That should be obvious to everybody. The fact that people buy homes in neighborhoods that could have been developed better is not a really legitimate argument to me because they're still coming to our community, which is an awesome community. We're just not doing an awesome job of wrapping up the loose ends with it. There's nobody that can argue we couldn't have done better, that we couldn't have put a park in the middle or any of that. There's, I haven't heard anyone push back about we couldn't done better. But that's done by the direction of the supervisor and the direction of the board, given to the planning department to tell them, "We want it different from now on." Changing the ordinances to be more like other communities, maybe not as stringent as Oakland Township, in my opinion, but in that, uh, going that way. Um, we took the building, the planning department, Pat Kittle took out of the building department, which had never been done before. It's always a job that's under building. So there's more people involved in knowing what's going on. There's an enforcement element that goes with it, being part of the building department. And there's more people that know what's going on. So the oversight was eliminated. Planning commission members were changed. The oversight of the planning department was changed. There hasn't been clear direction to Dick, um, in his firm of, that we want change, and that needs to happen. He's gonna do whatever we want him to do, I would imagine, you know? Um, the, uh, um, you know, there, the, the argument is that we don't wanna do better. We don't, we, we think it's great. Well, that's the, that's where this vote is gonna come down tonight. Do you think we could do better? Are you willing to make a change to try to do better? Or are you content with the status quo? I think we can do better. The reason that Bill Scarborough and Joe Sutcher are on other boards, they're on the Parks Board. They're on the Residential Open Space Committee Board. That's where you should start. You get your feet wet, learning about how to preserve the community. Then you move to the planning commission. Then you move to the township board. That's how things should progress if you want the mentality and the outcome to be what the residents were talking about tonight. The whole restructuring, you know, I found out recently that, um, since we don't regulate private roads for communities, we don't require them to have them inspected at all. Well, that's crazy because we're putting in neighborhood roads with no inspections. And then when they fail someday, they're gonna come to us. The developer's gone. So we're try, I just found this out, and the township's working on some of that. Same with the, uh, there's no tree preservation ordinance. There's no, uh, we don't regulate, we don't have storm sewers inspected in the township with people there because we don't wanna be responsible for storm sewers. So I've talked to Supervisor Aliaga and the building department about getting that done. And that's one of the, the things that I think failed when Pat separated departments. The enforcement end was eliminated. And now we've got some real issues of public trust and neighborhoods that are getting, uh, infrastructure done without supervision. Um, and that's crazy. And I expect this board to act promptly on that now that it's been, um, uncovered, that that's been going on. I even talked to other directors in the township who, who thought for sure we were requiring inspections and found out we weren't. So that's a whole nother issue that can be addressed. But the point is, please, no comments. The, um, it starts with the person bringing the blueprint or their plan to the township in meeting with the planning department. And that's the point where we, the gatekeeper, we need to give clear direction, how to direct the developers, that things are going to be different. We are one of the loosest regulated townships in Oakland County. So of course, we're primed for development because we don't have a lot of oversight over what they do. Um, and the, uh, and then, um, by the time the planning commission gets the, the blueprints, money's already been spent. Things are happening, you know? They've already got a plan together, way prematurely, in my opinion, which is why I wanted, uh, to, to start implementing people from the Residential Open Space Committee and, and the planning commission to have more involvement before anything's even drawn, to just give, and directors of the, of the departments to give direction of where we wanna be in the future before money's spent. Because we're very hesitant to change. I know from being on the planning commission 20 years, when they spend all that money on all the plans, you're, you don't wanna say, "Well, that, you spent 100 grand. Start over. We wanna do this." That's not fair to them either. It should be done. The rules should be laid in place right away. It should be a consensus of the board. And we should have the directive of, of the Carlisle and, uh, and the planning department express it. But they can't do that if we haven't been very clear on what we expect. So that's, I think, is on, on us, the board, of not, uh, demanding, um, better. The developers will do it. They'll do whatever we want them to do. And if they don't wanna do it, then they don't need to come here. That, we have to provide them with a reasonable use of their land and a reasonable return on their investment. We can decide what's reasonable. We don't have to let them decide how much they have to make in order to come here. So, um, the changing of the planning commission is the first step of a different mentality, a different, uh, perspective of the people. These guys both got 10 years' experience on it. Um, I'm planning commissions for other communities that are similar to us. And I could go into a million other things, but I don't think we need to because there has been no, no argument made of why we wouldn't want to try to change and do better. Um, and it's gonna take a lot more than these two new planning commissioners to do it. But it's the first step, that that's, that we're, we're, we're moving in the right direction and we're going where the people want us to go. And, um, there, there's just, there's no basis for the other side of the argument that I've seen made tonight by not one single resident. So that's.
I, one second, I just sent in. I just hear the comments. I appreciate the comments. But when I start, my administration was very, was very concerned about changes. We done very good changes, actually. Uh, we got the open space. We allow some local residents to have input for green space, open space and preservation. Also, we got that 38 acres that we purchased, the township purchased to remind be green space and be add to Clinton Wood, the part that's on, in Clarkston Road. So my administration, this administration, we work in that. So it's not like nothing is gonna happen or we're ineffective. I'm working hard every day with the board and other people to keep green space. So it is some changes for that matter. We are working hard and like trustee Morocco says, this is gonna be an important step for that change for tonight. Trustee Alamat.
I just have one quick comment. I thi, I think when we're discussing previous administrations, we should keep it that way. Uh, at the time Supervisor Kittle was here, he was not a one-man show. And the way you keep dragging his name through the mud, I think it's disrespectful. There was still a board of seven when he was supervisor. And I think if you have problems with prior administrations, you could just call it the previous administration. That's just my two cents.
Thank you, trustee Alamat. Okay, um, I guess we, okay, I will, uh, make a motion. I move to appoint Joe Sutcher as a recommend by the township supervisor, recommended by the township supervisor to the planning commission for a three-year term. The schedule to expire on December 31st, 2026.
Second.
Uh, trustee Jim Tader second my motion.
Recommend roll call.
Uh, a roll call, sure.
It is roll call.
It is roll call.
Okay, good.
Treasurer Brown?
No.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Alamothu?
Yes.
Trustee Ritchie?
Yes.
Trustee Tetter?
Yes.
Supervisor Aliaga?
Yes.
Clerk Newbeck?
Yes.
Thank you. I move to appoint William Scenerbro, is that right? Scavro, as recommended by the township supervisor to the planning commission for a three-year term. The schedule to expire on December 31st, 2026.
Second.
Okay?
I'm supportive.
Jim.
Sure.
Mm-hmm. Okay, is roll call?
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Alamothu?
No.
Trustee Ritchie?
No.
Trustee Tetter?
Yes.
Supervisor Aliaga?
Yes.
Clerk Newbeck, no. Treasurer Brown?
No.
Motion failed.